Does Prime Minister Drew really just not understand the new SSZ legislation? Or are his lies catching up with him? Despite all of the controversies on Nevis about the Destiny Project, don't you find it strange that PM Drew claims not to know anything about it?
Simply say that the SSZ is not the Destiny. Destiny as a project, I have not seen a proposal about a project.
Oh, you haven't seen it yet?
No, it hasn't. Well, it's out there, but I have not received anything as Prime Minister as a proposal.
Does the Prime Minister understand the legislation that he recently passed in the Parliament? Under the SSZ Act, the Prime Minister is a party to every SSZ development agreement in the country. Section 4.1 says that the Prime Minister may enter into development agreements. And section 4.2 says that where the area is in the island of Nevis, he shall consult with the NIA before he enters into a development agreement. With the Destiny Project having gone public, and all of these town halls and song and dance over the project, how has he not seen the proposal for the development agreement that he has to sign? He clearly either doesn't know his role, or is just negligent in doing his job. Despite the PM's claims that an SSZ does not create a country within a country, and that it does not affect our constitution or our sovereignty, listen to PM Drew himself admit that it does. And that this is the reason why there should be parliamentary oversight.
But the SSZ says that any development of a particular size where the constitution comes into question, sovereignty come to question, you just can't establish it, you must bring it to Parliament.
Here, PM Drew criticizes the lack of transparency in the Four Seasons and Kristoff Harbor agreements not being made public.
For example, the Four Seasons Agreement, have you ever seen that?
No.
I did not have to come to Parliament. The Kristoff Harbor, have you ever seen the agreement for Kristoff Harbor? Maybe, but it didn't come to Parliament. I'm not saying that any is bad or good, I'm just saying that there were major developments that did not have to come to Parliament. This is not just a project, like a, you know, simple project.
But what about the Ritz-Carlton Agreement?
Because I will not accept anybody signing anything in the dark night that can affect our constitution, that can affect our sovereignty, and can be established without being its own law.
Madam Speaker, I want to announce in this honorable House that Saint Kitts and Nevis, I am thrilled to announce that after much negotiations, that after much of putting the right things in place before this announcement is made, that we have brought together a joint press release that we will have here in Saint Kitts to start construction in 2025, a brand-new Ritz-Carlton Hotel.
The Ritz-Carlton Agreement never went to Parliament, and no one has seen that agreement, so was it signed by PM Drew in the dark night? Maybe we should ask the affected beach bar owners. But here is even more evidence that the PM clearly doesn't understand this whole SSZ concept.
The government alone cannot sign without first bringing it to Parliament. What used to happen when development of those type come, not a simple hotel or a simple, when those developments come, they're signed with the government, and then you just start to see implementation. And you're like, so where's the agreement? The agreement was signed in private.
Um, that's not true, mister. PM, section 7.2 of the SSZ Act says, "Upon the execution of a development agreement under this act, and following any ratification required pursuant to section 7.1, which is what requires the agreement to go before Parliament, the agreement must then be published in the Gazette." So actually, according to the law, the PM has to sign the agreement first, and then it goes to Parliament? Come on, mister. PM, were you trying to fool the people again, or did the AG just not break down the big legal words for you? It is clear that the Terence Drew Labour Government does not know what they're doing and will sell our country to rich foreigners while the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis suffer. The Prime Minister and his Cabinet colleagues have no clue what they're doing. They only care about their big salaries, enriching their friends and families, and traveling around the world. Stand up now and save Saint Kitts and Nevis.
Good evening, one and all. Those of you who are joining us in person at the OJ Commercial Complex here at Camps, but also to those of you wherever you may be located, if you are joining us on the live stream, on YouTube, on Facebook, or if you happen to be listening to us via radio, we welcome you all. This is the voice of the People's Action Movement, and we are here this evening to discuss some very important issues with you, the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis. But before we get into the meat of the matter here tonight, I first wish to play the National Anthem, so that we can all, so if we can all just stand while the National Anthem is being played. Before we all get seated, I would just like to invite Mr. David Lincoln-Pell, just to invite God's presence here this evening into these proceedings.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus Christ, your beloved Son. We ask for God for your Holy Spirit to be among us this evening, to guide our words, guide our thoughts, guide our tongue, that what is said here, God, will be enlightenment to the people listening to ourselves as well, to understand the gravity of what is taking place. We want persons to understand our God that we are here to do the best for our nation, and to let persons know that the heart of us is for the best of the people. So, oh God, let your Holy Spirit to guide us, and what is said here and done is done in order, and will be for prosperity for our nation and for our people. So we pray and ask for God to let your Holy Spirit take control and guide everyone, that we have to be said in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. So once again, I would like to welcome everyone here this evening, and I first want to set the tone, because we are here to discuss a serious issue, but we're not here on a somber tone. This is not a lecture. We want you to engage with us, because we all know that you have concerns about this legislation. This legislation has been much discussed for the past few weeks. We all know some of the provisions, some of the most concerning features of this particular piece of legislation. What we are here to do this evening is to provide some more insight into the particulars of what your concerns are about. So we hope that this evening you would have some questions for us. We can have a commentary between both the panel and the audience, so that we bounce ideas off of each other so far as possible. Because this is all a learning process. Everyone can learn from one another. We all have different experiences. We all have different challenges. We all may bring different perspectives. And all of that is why consultation is extremely important when you are passing a bill, especially when it has the potential to impact the daily lives of the citizens here. But we at the People's Action Movement saw it fit to be here this evening discussing this legislation with you, because this legislation is very concerning in our eyes. It touches, before I go into that, the People's Action Movement has been a party that has always been influential in shaping the legal landscape of this country. Just look at our constitution, a document that was crafted and introduced and passed by a PAM government and a PAM legislature. We were the party who fought time and time again to ensure that no man could just get up in the Parliament and pass new boundaries and call an election. We fought over and over, election petition after election petition, to ensure that the people of this country, voices via the ballot box can be heard, can be heard. One man, one vote. We are the party to platform first for national ID cards, for voting cards, for fingerprints, for a requirement for voting. We are the party ensure that landowners in this country don't get their lands taken away without at least getting fear compensation. And so if need be, the People's Action Movement will be the party in the vanguard, ensuring that this piece of legislation, poorly drafted as it is, never infringe the rights that we, the PAM, and the people of this country fought so hard to achieve here today. And so we are brought to you with this panel, a very diverse panel, between some members young and some are younger. Some offer more experience in the law than others. Some come with a fresh educational perspective. Some come from different backgrounds, some practice in different areas of the law. But we are just a few of the lawyers who sat and considered this legislation. Because I can tell you, a few days ago, we were about nine, eight, eight, nine strong in a room, breaking down this particular legislation, provision by provision, making sure that the people's rights and their freedoms are secured. And so, without much ado, you see on my left, we have Mr. Azad Gums, who you all know is a private practitioner of law. We also have former Minister of Government, Dame Constance Mitchum, a very senior member of the Bar. And we have to my immediate left, our political leader, Miss Natasha, Mrs. Natasha Greybrooks. All very experienced lawyers, all who bring particular insight and wisdom, and all who have come to share their thoughts with you about this legislation here tonight. And so, if I can just quickly turn now to the first presenter, Mr. Gums, who we are calling tonight the interpreter, who will give you the legal breakdown of the provisions, so that we understand what the law is about, the framework of the law is clearly defined, so that you understand the context in which any discussion that we are about to have, or any discussions in the past, it is done in that background. And so, Azad, I see you're getting ready. You look ready, so just take us over.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to everyone. We're looking at the interpretation of the legislation. In fact, this legislation has been a very controversial one. And it's important as a party that will look at it in various aspects. And so I will deal with the interpretation. As we look at the Special Sustainability Zone Authorization Act 2025, we have to speak plainly and deal with what the law actually says. This is not about politics. It's about helping people understand a piece of legislation that alters how major development decisions, land use authority, and economic regulatory powers are made and exercised in Saint Kitts and Nevis. The Act gives the Prime Minister the authority to enter into development agreements with private developers, and it uses a very strong legal phrase, notwithstanding any enactment. In simple language, this means the agreement can take precedence over other existing laws. Once this act is used, the usual legal limitations do not apply in the same way. Under these agreements, developers can receive concessions, waivers, and tax benefits. But they can also receive, they not only receive concessions, waivers, and tax benefits, but they can also receive certain administrative powers inside the zone. They can influence how land is used, what activities are permitted, and they can create rules known as zone laws and zone bylaws, which must be followed by those who operate in the zone. These are not suggestions, they are enforceable rules. So what may sound like ordinary development projects actually give a private developer a level of control that is normally held by public authorities. And that is why we, the People's Action Movement, we are keeping close attention to the legislation. Another major concern is the process itself. The Prime Minister signs the agreement first, Cabinet approves it, and only after that is Parliament asked to ratify it. By that time, by the time Parliament gets involved, most of the important decisions have already been made. It means that Parliament is confirming decisions rather than shaping them. This raises an even bigger issue, the lack of checks and balances. When the Prime Minister negotiates the deal, Cabinet simply approves it, and Parliament only comes in at the end, there is no real oversight at any stage. There is no requirement for independent review, no mandatory oversight body, no public disclosure before approval, and no mechanism to challenge decisions made inside the zone. Power moves in one direction without any counterweight to balance it. In any strong democracy, major decisions that involve land, incentives, regulation, and long-term commitments should always be examined at multiple levels before they become final. Instead, this act reduces the process to one main decision-maker, and everyone else reacting after the facts. The Act also sets out a short list of matters that cannot be transferred, such as foreign affairs, defence, citizenship, and elections. But outside of those areas, a significant amount of authority can be negotiated. And this is why we, the People's Action Movement, feel that this act gives more power than it should. So when we break it down, the Act is not only encouraging investment, it is creating zones where private entities can exercise a form of public authority without the checks and balances that normally protect citizens. That has real implications for transparency, accountability, and public interest. At the end of the day, this is not about rejecting development. It is about making sure development is done in a way that respects our democratic principles, protects our people, and keeps decision-making accountable to the citizens of this country. For those reasons, the People's Action Movement has taken the position that this legislation should not stand. The structure of the Act, the level of unchecked authority it gives the Prime Minister, and the absence of proper oversight creates an environment that can easily be abused. In its current form, it appears to be a tool that the Labour Party can use to bypass accountability, concentrate power, and facilitate corruption under the cover of development. It seems to be an engine or tool for corruption. The People's Action Movement believes that development must never come at the expense of transparency or public trust. Until there is a framework that protects our institutions and ensures general and genuine accountability, this act should not stand. The Act is too bad to be amended, it must be repealed.
Thank you, Azad, for that insightful presentation. I want you to, I want to get the ball rolling here with some questions, because I have a few. What is the point of these zone laws? What is the point of these zone laws? Because it seems to me, as someone who studied constitutional law, the whole point of a constitution which has provisions securing rights and freedoms is that everybody under the constitution or governed by the constitution is treated equally, equality under the law. So it seems to me that this piece of legislation is a mechanism which institutionalizes inequality, laws for certain people and laws for other people. Is that true?
Yes, by the very nature of what you've said, I've often said that those persons who form part of the SSZ, the zone, their rules and regulations would be far or maybe far different from the rules of people like me who live in constituency number four. And so, the rules that we in constituency number four may have to adhere to, in those zones, they are different rules. And so, as you have indicated, it can breed a level of segregation whereby you treat one set of individuals differently to another.
Yeah, exactly, because I know under the legislation, there is certain, there is even certain, you know, parts of what you call society that is own laws, that the developers would have rights over. So I think there was the customs, they can implement their own policy in terms of healthcare and security services. All of these are outlined specifically as aspects that they would have their own ability to regulate.
And I must say, Mr. Grant, that is quite unfortunate that any government, any Prime Minister would want to introduce this type of legislation on his or her people.
Okay, thank you. So, before we go further, very interesting question and answer we just had. I want to bring in Dame Mitcham, who will just speak to us very briefly from the people's perspective in terms of the impact and the incentives that are given under this legislation to the developers. So, for the purposes of tonight, Dame Mitcham would be our, what we call our impact analyst.
Good evening, everyone. We have come here tonight to discuss with you, the general public, an act that was passed in our Parliament called the Special Sustainability Zones Authorization Act, number twenty-one of 2025. Immediately, you will note that I said we came to discuss an act of Parliament and not a bill. A bill is what you expect the government, normally via its legal department, Attorney General, to provide you with before going to debate the contents in Parliament. The bill is therefore a draft of the proposed legislation to be debated. And after debate, and it is passed into law by the majority of Parliament, it then becomes an act of Parliament. The normal procedure, when an important or significant bill is proposed, is for that draft document or bill to be circulated to the public as a form of consultation, usually to individuals, groups, and relevant organisations like the Bar Association, with the Attorney General asking for feedback on the bill's contents. Those of you who read the open letter from our local bar association would understand the significance of that explanation. This extremely important bill was introduced to Parliament and went through its three required readings all on the same day, eleventh of August nineteen, uh, twenty twenty-five. It was then signed or assented to by Her Excellency the Governor General on the twenty-first August 2025, which she is duty-bound to sign. The government did not wait for the usual monthly gazette to be published. It issued an extraordinary gazette, number forty-six of 2025, to ensure that it became law that same day. We, the public, do not know what the rush was about. The bill was not circulated for discussion or feedback in the usual manner. Hence, that open letter to the Attorney General from the Bar Association. Now that the public is becoming aware of the contents in the act, there appears to be widespread dissatisfaction with it. A major problem with the act that the Pam legal team is highlighting can be found in section four, one D of the act. It reads, and it was mentioned by Attorney Gums a while ago. It reads, "The Prime Minister may enter into development agreements notwithstanding anything contained in any enactment." Let that sink in for a moment. It is saying, "The Prime Minister does not have to bother with any of our laws or our constitution or any kind of enactment when he is dealing with these developers." There are a number of issues that the development agreement requires as conditions precedent. And they are listed in section five of the act for the developer of a zone to fulfill. Things like providing an economic analysis by an expert, giving a rosy forecast that the plan would be beneficial for the future. The zone developer would also be required to present plans to develop the necessary infrastructure, utilities, and facilities within the special sustainability zone. When any of us is building a home or putting up any kind of structure, part of that process is an application to the Development Control and Planning Board, commonly known to us as the Building Board. The act which establishes that board provides that oversight body to ensure that there is some accountability for the structures we build in our country. This SSZ legislation does not make any provision for the Building Board to play any role whatsoever in the construction of buildings in the zone. So God help us if there was ever a structural disaster in the zone. That act that deals with development and planning also provides for the principle of equitable planning, so that a developer is not treated better than our local citizens when it comes to putting up structures. For example, when Marriott came, at the time, buildings in St. Kitts and Nevis could only go up three floors. And Marriott negotiated an increase to five stories. Everyone got the benefit. That is why, if you look at that building at the top of New Street belonging to an ordinary citizen, it is also five stories high since the Marriott. The SSZ is required to provide public safety and security services and rapid emergency response mechanisms, but does not require anyone to be in charge. Suppose a murder is committed over there, who is in charge? Will the police be allowed inside the gates to investigate? The developers are also required to provide dispute resolution services and mechanisms, which are just big words meaning courts. So if they are allowed their own courts, what happens to ours? If you are wronged by someone in a zone, will you be able to enter the zone to serve a summons? Which court will prevail? They are to provide their own health services. Will we have access to these services and they to ours? There are more questions than answers in relation to what can only be described as not a well-thought-out piece of legislation. Under the SSZ legislation, there is also no role reserved for the Conservation Commission, which is established under the National Conservation and Environment Act of nineteen eighty-seven. This is the act that guarantees public access to all of the beaches in the country for recreational purposes. It was a sweeping piece of legislation passed by the People's Action Movement under the Sir Kennedy administration. I was proud to be one of the voters in Parliament that day when we brought that concept into law. If we are not careful, the privilege to enjoy all of our beaches could be taken away by this SSZ act. So that if you are chased off the beach by some foreign crypto-billionaire, who can you turn to? There are no regulations mentioned in the SSZ act or even any intention to make regulations for anyone's guidance. Something as far-reaching as this comes over as something without merit, put together by someone in a hurry. Then turn to section nine of the act, which could have been our last line of defence, turns out not to make any sense. That section reads, "The Prime Minister with respect to the government or the Premier with respect to the Nevis Island Administration may establish independent oversight bodies to receive and review applications from potential zone developers or to monitor zone developer compliance with the terms of any development agreement." So here we are with this far-reaching piece of legislation. And the Prime Minister or the Premier is given the option to appoint or not to appoint oversight bodies to monitor whether the developers are doing what they say they would do. So we have no protection if the Premier and Prime Minister decide they're not forming any oversight committees. And even if they form a committee, there are no regulations telling them what to do. I think I heard one of the members in Nevis complaining recently about the fact that they were asked to nominate a member for this oversight board. And they have written back asking, "Well, we are the regulations, what are we supposed to do?" There's absolutely nothing in the act to tell them what to do. Finally, there are a number of unanswered questions in relation to this act. Questions of citizenship that could leave persons stateless, that is, without a country, if they fall within certain sections of our constitution. Sections that allow a developer to get a development agreement through Parliament and then transfer the whole deal or part of the deal to other persons or entities without going back to Parliament. If the agreement that went to Parliament is drastically changed, say from leasing a small portion of a seabed for a little jetty and is immediately changed to leasing a large portion of the seabed for an enormous container shipping venture, say from Nigeria, that could be arranged in a back-room deal without coming back to Parliament. All of these dangerous matters are facilitated because the politicians have reserved for themselves a series of escape clauses that allows them to make you feel that they are being transparent when you are really being hoodwinked. Thank you.
Some very interesting matters there, Dame. But before we get into that, I'm just gonna pass it along, pass the baton along to our political leader so that she can just deliver her remarks before we get into that discussion I talked about earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, counsel. I would also like to extend greetings to all those present and all those viewing online via the different social media platforms and those listening via radio. I am deeply honoured, but more concerned, to see that people in this federation are voicing their concerns and they are falling on deaf ears. But I'm honoured to speak on their behalf. And those of you here tonight, I know that you understand that something is fundamentally wrong. You are here because your voice is being silenced by an act of Parliament. It is trying to threaten the very core of sovereignty and the well-being of our citizens, the Special Sustainability Zone Act, SSZ. Before I dissect this deeply flawed legislation, I want to express profound thanks to the exceptional legal team who are here tonight. with one member absent because he had to travel overseas. But I have to give them praise because they are bold, they are thorough, and they have researched this legislation. Dame Constance Mitchum, Lindsay Fitzpatrick Grant, Delara McClure Taylor, Chesley Hamilton, John L. Powell, Azad Gomes, Siobhan Phipps Harding, and your host, Mr. Camau Grant. You see, Mr. Grant, I'm very afraid to meet him in court, but I'm glad I have him on this team for legal research. We are not just mere academics and armed cheer critics. The persons I mentioned as part of the legal team are battle tested titans, legal luminaries. And we collectively possess decades of wisdom and practical experience in the laws of this great Federation. So you are in good hands. We have not only interpreted the law, but many of these persons have shaped it. And I'm so proud to sit next to Dame Constance Mitchum. You see, there are many landmark decisions in this Federation which we can attribute to legal minds here tonight. And as they continue to lend their expertise and their integrity to this fight, we are eternally grateful. For weeks, some persons may have said, "We are silent or we are not loud enough." Let me say it, that silence is not acceptance. It is not fear. We went through a period of rigorous analysis and assessment and gave great thought and research to what has been thrown on the people of this Federation. We are meticulous and we dissected the true corrosive impact of this disastrous legislation. What they have forced on our people, the threats to our land and the threats to our future. Having pulled back the curtain on this Trojan horse, it is time to fight and fight hard. This act is cloaked in the deceptive language of sustainability. It is nothing short of a Trojan horse designed to export our birthright and import institutionalized corruption. It must be repealed. And here is why. Focusing on some of the critical areas that directly impact you, the citizens. This is not about Pam. This is not about Labour. This is not about C C M or N R P. This is about the people of this Federation. This act gives exorbitant power to the Prime Minister. The act hands unchecked discretionary power to Dr. Drew to designate vast tracts of our national land and coastal areas as S S Z. This eliminates transparent democratic oversight and opens the door to favoritism and abuse. Land seizure and property rights erosion. The provision allows for the compulsory acquisition of certain tracts of land, even privately owned land, under the vague and expansive terms, often bypassing standard compensation and due process mechanisms. This is a direct assault on the sacred right to property for ordinary politicians and nevisians. There is a waiver on national laws. This act permits S S Z developers to be exempted from a host of existing national planning, environmental and labour laws. It creates a regulatory shadow state where large developers can operate with impunity, ignoring protections put in place for our environment and our workers, the tax breaks and incentives over citizens' needs. This act showers developers with lucrative long term tax holidays, concessions and fee waivers. Every dollar waived for a foreign developer is a dollar stolen from our hospitals, stolen from our schools, stolen from our roads, stolen from our reliable electricity and water that we so need and stolen from our police services. The needs of their profit are prioritised over the needs of our people. There has been lack of public consultation and transparency. The process for establishing these zones is entirely top down. There is no requirement for meaningful public consultation. It is effectively silencing the voices of the communities who live in these zones or close to these zones. It is challenging the livelihoods and the environment. And there is economic exclusion for locals. By granting massive incentives and regulatory freedom primarily to large, well capitalized developers, the act effectively creates an uneven playing field, locking out the smaller man, locking out the local entrepreneurs, the small businesses from participating in the very economic growth it purports to champion. This word sustainability, is it real? Or is it real for Saint Kitts and Nevis and its citizens? I stand here today because I have the conviction that the needs of the people are paramount. Everything else must be secondary. Our parliamentarians were elected to represent us. And so by not facilitating our involvement and shutting us out, they are facilitating the enrichment of a select few and creating an engine for corruption. Where our patrimony is sold off piece by piece, brick by brick, square footage by square footage, must we allow that? We are here to safeguard the beautiful Federation of Saint Kitts and Nevis, the precious home that we have fought so hard for. The people are speaking and they are speaking very loudly. They are not fearful. There is loud shouts of protest. And some of you have turned out here tonight and we must listen. Any party, any administration who don't listen to the people is not for the people ought to be sent where they belong. Our heritage is under threat. We are at a tipping point where the choices we make on land use today will determine the quality of life for our children and grandchildren tomorrow. The future of this nation is not a speculative commodity to be secretly traded. It is a sacred trust and we must protect it through transparency and accountability. And so we demand that people are empowered. We demand that there is affordable access to land for housing, for our farmers, for the local entrepreneurs. We have been crying out for years. So how is it land is now available? We don't want any more backroom deals that dispossess our citizens. The land must be mapped out and zoned with an ironclad commitment to our national environment, food security and climate resilience. The S S Z act must be repealed to protect our sovereignty and prevent the creation of a state within a state. The time for blind faith in this administration is over. Accountability is not a luxury. It is the backbone of a democracy. And so we are here tonight to listen to you, to dialogue with you, to ensure that you understand every aspect of this legislation that is filled with flaws and creates an avenue for corruption. When people take or when people fail to take your interest at heart, they must be held responsible. And when they don't listen, they must pay. We will not stand for the disrespect of our people. We will not stand for the abuse of our people. We will fight for the repeal of the S S Z act and we will continue to put people first. Thank you for listening. Ask all the questions you need to know. We are here to assist and we will not shy away from them. Thank you.
So if anyone has a question, you can just signal in the ear and then the microphone will come in your direction.
Testing. Pleasant good evening. My name is Dwayne DJ Flames Ferguson. I'm representing Winifem. And I have three questions. The first one is the Electoral Impact and Voters Act changes. I was listening to the Premier of Nevis sometime last week when he made a statement stating that his intention is to amend the Voters Act of Nevis. What concrete measures will be implemented to ensure that the introduction of thousands of S S Z residents does not alter the existing electoral balance? The mission, the voting powers of Nevisian are influence the outcome of an election. And B in this question as well, is there anything in the Constitution of Saint Kitts and Nevis where you can have two type of citizens? One can vote and one cannot vote based on how they obtain their citizenship? Question number two, duty free concession and cost of living. The Premier also indicate that the S S Z residents and business will receive broad duty free privilege that significantly reduce the cost of imported goods and appliances and whatnot. It even go in details stating that if you travel to Saint Martin and buy a fridge, when the fridge come to Saint Kitts, you got to pay this duty and this taxes. But in the special zone, you will be able to just go in, pay for cheap on your driver, you have it home. You have it in your home at a lower cost. So the question is, why can't similar duty free concession be granted to establish local companies such as Rams, T D C, Hasford to reduce the high cost of living for the citizens of Saint Kitts and Nevis? And number three, my final question, as the government or anyone who take part in passing the legislation for the S S Z, did a population impact assessment to determine how long it would take for the seven to fifteen thousand newly introduced S S Z citizen to surpass the current Nevis population?
That last question, could you just repeat the end bit?
So the last question, as the government or anyone who had anything to do with the legislation being passed have done or conduct a population impact assessment to determine how long it will take for the seven or fifteen thousand newly introduced citizen to surpass the current citizen in Nevis?
Thank you. Okay. In relation to your first question, you spoke about the citizens and whether or not there will be need for the changes of electoral laws to provide these individuals who come to the S S Z with the privilege. As indicated in my presentation and having looked at the act, the act does not grant citizenship. It does not change the pathways to citizenship either. And it does not allow a developer to get or give citizenship or residency. So even as how it is for persons coming to Saint Kitts and Nevis as the act stands, those provisions would still be applicable. You will have to apply for citizenship under the normal regulations because the act only speaks about citizenship to say that it does not affect citizenship requirements already established.
Now, as it relates to changing any of the the present legislation in the federal Parliament, you would have to get the necessary majority to change or amend these legislation. So the National Assembly Act is a federal law. And so as it stands right now, as it stands right now, in order for that act to be changed or amended, it will have to get the necessary majority from those in Parliament. However, one can glean from the possibility of getting, let's say, ten thousand citizens, new citizens. If you get ten thousand new citizens, whether it is in Saint Kitts or Nevis, that can drastically affect what can happen in an election. If we look at elections past, did any party win by ten thousand votes? And so clearly, in some constituencies, some persons won by four, thirty-six, a hundred and some persons won by four, thirty-six, a hundred and something. You get five hundred new registered voters that can impact the results of an election. But if you have ten thousand and some of these ten thousands can possibly contribute to a campaign, that also can affect the results. Because if you have contributed or donated significantly to my campaign, I can understand why some persons may want to say, well, okay, you have donated to my campaign, so I will put legislation in place, things to protect you. And that is why we have to be concerned in relation to this legislation. Because it can directly impact the results of an election. It can impact our country. It can impact our local economy. It can impact our businesses. And so therefore, this act having such a significant impact on the people in different avenues ought to have come to our people in the stage of bill so that we can have the necessary consultation and not after the fact. And I think you asked whether or not if the constitution spoke of two types of citizens. Ms. Mitchum would have been round that time, one of the brilliant minds. But I did not see it. I'm not sure if I missed it when I was wearing my glasses, but I don't think there are two types of citizens.
I was I was here scrambling, looking for my copy of the Constitution, but I think I left it in my car. The Constitution allows for government to create different types of citizenship. You have various types listed in the Constitution now, and it allows for Parliament to create other types. When we introduce the Citizenship by Investment Act, it was never intended that economic citizens would vote. When we introduce the legislation and during all of the time that PM Administration was there, no economic citizens were allowed to vote. We noticed when the Labour Party came in that there were some breaches of that arrangement. And we heard or learnt that some economic citizens were allowed to vote by the Labour Administration. But it is not legal for economic citizens to vote, as far as I'm aware. I don't know if they have done anything behind the scenes that I don't know about. But on the PM, economic citizens were not allowed to vote.
Sorry, I think you asked a question about whether the government conducted an impact assessment for how long it will take the thousands to surpass the current population?
Just want to say something else. Put you into the Citizenship by Investment Act where that if you are a citizen by investment, the question now after that might follow up going to be, what about the daughter, the son of that citizen? If that child is born in St. Vincent Nevis? Because a modern father can invest in the country, can buy property, can buy a house. But if they have two kids, in the next twenty years or thirty years, will they be able to vote as well?
Yeah.
Because you got to look at this thing in all different angles. Because even though someone might come in and say the economic citizen can vote, they can also populate Nevis as well.
Yeah. A person born in St. Vincent Nevis is a full-fledged citizen, right? We may have different heritage, may come from different backgrounds, but that person is for all intents and purposes a citizen of the country. From my recollection, because of how our constitution is in terms of it was set up alongside other constitutions in the region, citizenship is not the only requirement for voting. Actually, it spans from a broader concept of Commonwealth citizenship. Once you are Commonwealth citizen, you actually can vote, provided that you spend requisite amount of time residing in the country. So if we're talking about voting rights being given to persons who live inside these developments, one of the first questions I would ask is, who is that? What is that person's nationality, right? Are they a Commonwealth citizen residing in that development? And is the development agreement, does it contemplate that those persons getting voting rights? In terms of the census, I would say, not to be facetious, but are those persons really going to be counted? If you have a census going around, are the people who work in the census going into the development, the so-called SSZ, and taking a head count? I don't know. I don't think anything has been said on that. And you would be hard pressed to convince me how that would be the case. Because on what basis are they, you know, being counted in the census, right, of the country? As we had, an individual wanted to ask a question for a while. I don't think the mic is on.
Hello, hello, good night.
Yeah.
My name is Cash Wright Weed. Lots of questions and very few answers. For example, I hear you tonight because the government was not yet being consulted with what's going on on Nevis. The ruling administrators was, but not the government. The government are the persons we lack. The ruling administrators, we have not yet been consulted with yet. A lot of things I ain't seem to be understanding, you know. St. Kitts cannot secede from Nevis. Nevis could secede from St. Kitts. What's going on on Nevis? Ten thousand people against thirteen thousand. But the thirteen, it's like, who coming in with the, what do you call them? SSSZ, you hear that? S, special. Who bringing them in, regard them to be special? And they referring to us as like we infuriate them. How could they just take Milan? Let's see this, we got on here. Operation Dragnet fifty. The last twenty-five years of the twentieth century. The first of December nineteen seventy-five, William Thatcher's last general election. He had debate around the oil on, before he went on, yeah, quiet lands. Campaigning, campaigning, campaigning. Who did campaign to say what's going on on Nevis? You know, affect us? If the administration on Nevis change and they decide not to continue with that, we don't hear St. Kitts complete. A lot of people ain't understanding the seriousness of this thing here. How could they just destroy to just take eight, six down St. Kitts and then what? About three in St. Kitts and three on Nevis who pass the bill in the federal parliament? Because that's where I heard Janice Daniel Janice Daniel Hodge spoke to on Wednesday. Serious, look at it. What are the people? What do we own? Just across the rodeo. The birthplace of democracy in the Caribbean, buckless estate yard. Blood was shed. Who own it now today? Who not own it now today? Which acres of our land been sold? And I tell you, the only vibrant group of personacy existing right now in St. Kitts is the consortium. PM supporters, PLP supporters, Labour supporters. But Dr. Terence Joe, he wait, I hear one run. That's all I'm going to say, I hear one run, who squeezing me? And then again, what is it, right? I can't farm in Milan until I something, you know. The Prime Minister knows, he is the Minister for Development Bank. He know that I got a loan down Development Bank. But they come up the Agriculture Department, come up on Milan, me special, inferior. They come up on Milan, push down me fence, I can't do nothing at all on me farm. And it's like, then interest going up on me loan, and he's like, what happened? A lot of things going on, a people in, I'm coming and I read, read it, you know. I could talk about it in here. Because I can't substantiate that. I could substantiate, the commission of police not to. Superintendent of Police knows, I hear me laugh, right? Superintendent of Police knows the evidence of the but nobody want to get involved. What they waiting for is either for me to reach in the bearing gun or to come in jail. Personally, Beacon Heights, La Valley, White Gate, Kishishan Hall. How much million, billion of dollars are spent?
Yes, so I understand you have a number of concerns.
Mr. Tweed.
Yeah, Mr. Tweed. A lot of them touch and concern the SSC, right?
Exactly. Because since twenty twenty-four, we were supposed to export it.
What I distill from what you're saying, you raise an important issue about consultation.
And voters too, because only Kishishan who born here supposed to vote here. No family don't come, you can vote to the side, how Milan go?
You raise an important issue.
Made the body.
About consultation and about how exactly in vision the NIA is supposed to be consulted with the federal government, right?
Administration, we are the government, federal administration.
Yeah, the federal administration.
Because only nine of them, thousands of us.
So any of you want to speak about the process of dialogue between the federal administration and the NIA? Because in the legislation, it raises an interesting issue because the Prime Minister, hold on, Mr. Tweed, the Prime Minister would have said something interesting on the radio recently that he hasn't seen
The document, the proposal.
document that is going on out there.
It was passed.
But the legislation, the own SSZ that was recently passed said that he must, he is it, right? The Prime Minister is a party to all development agreements. The NIA may be a party, but the Prime Minister must. So if there is a potential agreement out there that is floating around and the Prime Minister has not seen it as yet, well, that's cause for concern.
I can't, I can't, I can't to Parliament. What question want to ask? The lawyers of the People's Action Movement, are you all prepared to take this matter to Caricom? Are you all, because I'm talking about Venezuela, and now in the Caribbean? This is a apartheid system they're bringing on here. Are you all prepared for that? Are you all prepared? Because I want to tell you now. Dr. Terence Joe going to be the chairman of Caricom February. This matter got to reach to Caricom before he becomes the chairperson of Caricom.
So Mr. Tweed, there is someone behind you, Mr. Pell. I think you want to raise a concern. But I can tell you, the People's Action Movement is ready to vindicate all concerns regarding this legislation.
I agree. Sorry, but good evening, everyone. I'm here to ask a question, not for myself, but someone sent me some questions to ask. For those of you who know, I'm Lincoln David Pell, one of the deputy political leaders for the People's Action Movement. This question is that, is it a private city that will be built? That's one question the person sent. Who can afford to go there? Is it an all-inclusive result? Or it's exclusively for a specific type of clientele or class of people? The other question is, will that project employ its own civil laws? I guess this pop up here. And who is the authority over it? Can the federal government exercise any kind of authority over it, et cetera, et cetera? That's what the person has here. But I will leave anything for me for that. But that's some questions some persons had to ask. Thank you.
Mr. Gomes will take us away.
Just before Mr. Gomes addresses Mr. Pell's question, I don't want Mr. Flames to think that we did not answer the question on the impact assessment. No, the act speaks about the zone developers dealing with assessments in relation to the zones. But as it relates to the act which has been passed, we don't see anything that indicated that an assessment was done, a social impact assessment or even a public economic assessment. If it was done, it was not part of the legislative framework. And I haven't heard or seen anything to suggest that that was carried out in terms of how long it will take, how it will affect those of us who are currently here, and how long the proposed zones will take to reach the capacity. And so whilst the act speaks about an assessment for the specific zones, there is nothing that the mover of the bill or anything coming out of the consultations post, post the bill that suggests that some assessment was had and telling us what's going to happen to village X or village B? What is going to happen in relation to the schools in that area? What is going to happen in relation to the infrastructure? And so I think that is something that the people should demand. And that is why we are here saying that the legislation is fundamentally flawed. Because clearly, although the Attorney General would have said that this is only a small act, a few pages, look at the public outcry. Look at the persons who are continuously asking for this act to be repealed. You have the Bar Association that he was once a part of actively. He was once the president. Is it that because he is no longer the president that he doesn't care as to the impact of this piece of law? Is it that because he's the Attorney General and all that he feels that he's supreme? Well, his father showed him that he's not supreme. You have the Chamber of Industry and Commerce speaking about the economic challenges that this act have. Did they consult the chamber before they rushed into Parliament in August so that the chamber can say what really makes sense for our economy? Do they really appreciate what the chamber thought? What the bar thought? What legal luminaries thought? If you take the politics out of it, okay, they want to ignore the political parties. What about the NGOs, those person in civic society? What about you, the ordinary man and woman contributing to our society and making sure that you have to meet your obligations? How is this sustainability act going to make you better off? But there are more questions than answers. And so we are going to continue to ask the questions because the people in this federation deserve better. Sorry, Mr. Gomes, I just didn't want to.
Oh, do the next one?
Well, Mr. Flame, Mr. Flames, DJ Flames, yes. As you have said, and you have recognized, there are certain concessions that this act would allow to certain people. In fact, the move of the bill is none of us here. In fact, it's the Labour administration that has put forward this piece of legislation. And so we must ask the question, why is it that this Labour government wants to treat foreigners differently to the people here, living citizens of Saint Kitts and Nevis and residents as well? So we must ask the question to the government, because what you have asked is a valid question. But it is only the minds of those who sit in Parliament, especially on the government side, that could answer it. Because on this side, we are for the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis. We want to put people first, and that's why we are talking about this legislation. Mr. Pell asks a question about the S S Z and whether or not the S S Z creates a private city. Again, the act does not allow or does not use words like private city. But in practical effect, it allows developers to operate a zone as if it were a private city. And I'm going to tell you why. The developer can manage land, use, in, land use inside the zone. They can decide what is built, where it is built, and what activities are allowed. The developer can create enforceable rules, zone laws and zone bylaws, as the legislation speaks of. And these rules will govern businesses, buildings, operations, movements, activities inside the zone. Thirdly, the developer may exercise administrative powers normally held by government. The act allows agreements that give developers authority over licensing, permits, approvals, operational oversight, compliance inside the zone. And so when you look at it, the act doesn't, on its face, use the words, the creation of a private city. But in practice, that is what government is, may allow developers to do and give developers the powers to do. And so this act again, in my view, has been crafted this way intentionally. It has been, it can be used as an engine for corruption. And I do not put anything past this Labour administration to, when it comes to taking the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis for granted to suit themselves. I have always said, there are some leaders who seek office to empower others. And there are some who seek others only to empower themselves.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, um, this question is just for my own self advocacy, I just need some clarity on something. So sometimes when persons are criticizing the current act, the Prime Minister would say things like, you know, Port Zante is there and Fregate Bay was a S S Z and industrial site, those kind of things. So what I want to know is, what was lacking in the previous acts that made it necessary for this new one? And what are the key differences in what governed something like a Port Zante or something like a Fregate Bay development or industrial site versus what would govern something like a destiny? And also, what are the key differences between these three tiers they've been talking about? For, 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 for the reason why they needed this new act? So I just want to know what was there before? And a nice comparison between what was there before and what's here now that they, they drafted and put forward. So what is the key differences?
Well, that was a question I had myself, because when I looked at this legislation, I wondered why it was necessary. It's not necessary unless they're going to use it for something else. But you know that we have had major developments in this country before. We had people of vision who could determine what was good. So all of the, the Port Zante, that was done by a prime administration, and we never need this foolish piece of legislation to, to, to have Port Zante built. It is not necessary. And I don't know why they rushed to push this thing through the Parliament. Even Christoph Harbour came in without any S S Z. We build the Peninsula Road, there was no S S Z. All of the major developments done under the prime administration, we never had this piece of legislation. And look at the wealth that came to the country through those visionary projects. So my, my view is that this, this law really should be repealed. It is unnecessary. It is unnecessary. Somebody may be hoping to make a lot of money out of it in some way. But it is not necessary for our development here in this country. It is not necessary.
But the unfortunate thing, Dame Mitchum, is that the government is seeking to confuse the issue by saying that, well, every development from this point on will go to Parliament. And that wasn't happening before. But under this very legislation, if you read section seven one, it specifically says what has to go to Parliament. And not everything. Every development agreement must be put before the Parliament. It's only some, you know, some development agreements have to go before the Parliament, but not all.
That, that, that's exactly it, only some.
When they seek to confuse and say that, well, from this point on, everything is going before the Parliament, not a thing or so.
I think, Mr. Grant, that you should be clear as to who seeks to confuse the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis. If I'm not mistaken, it was the Prime Minister on Freedom FM sometime saying that all of these developments will go through the S S Z, trying to confuse and fool the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis yet again. In fact, it is the same Prime Minister who says that he has not seen any destiny agreement. When the act says that it is the, the, the acceptance of this agreement, the power to enter in this agreement comes from the office of the Prime Minister. It is the Prime Minister who has the authority to enter agreements. So it is whether or not the Prime Minister really understands or understood the legislation before he passed it.
Yeah, next question, please. Good evening.
Like this. Good evening. My name is Claudius Haddis Gomes. I want to big up the People's Action Movement, and I want to big up all of our supporters who are here this evening. Give yourself a round of applause. It's important that we do that, because Pam is alive and Pam is here and here to stay. Now tonight, I can recall my old grandmother who always said to us, once you have common sense, it could take you around the whole world. And then everybody inside, they got common sense. When I listen, all this confusion that Labour is putting out there. I am not confused, for sure. I know that the whole idea is to try, is to try to fool people. Now my question. Such an act should have been shown out to the citizens of this country because they're going to be affected badly. Should have been gone out to the people, and there should have been town hall meetings, town hall meetings in all the constituencies, both in Saint Kitts and Nevis. And the government failed to do that. But they rush into Parliament and pass it one day, one, two, three readings, and become act. Go on to the governor general and sign. So you have to ask yourself a question, why? Why? There's more water in the pistol than why, the story where they just say. Something inside there, that is why they rush it to Parliament. People are stupid, you know? People are stupid, people understand. But they want to say to the people of the Federation, the time has come for them to get up off the laurels and speak out and tell the government that you don't like what is happening. You are the bosses, you're in charge, and if they continue, we will flood the streets of Saint Kitts and Nevis and put them out of office. That's what we need to do, for people sitting down and taking knockbough after knockbough. And they come and harassing and tell you, oh, hard is this, oh, hard is that, oh, that's, oh, that. No, you could make a mark, you could make a point, go along church street, go across the courthouse, one man demonstration with the placard and speak and send a message to the government. Because we cannot continue tolerating this kind of nonsense and jokey business that going on in the country. Cannot, cannot. And the time has come for the people to stand up, or we're going to come and pass this act in Parliament. The chamber against it, the bar association against it, and Mr. Wilkin against it. And the people now want it. So what we need to do, I am calling on the panel tonight, that we need to make, make a mark. And we need to call for the appeal of this act. Yeah, we need to do something. We can't sit down and allow the government to bully us and bully the Federation. Cannot. We have to stand up and we have to speak out and send a strong message to them. And I could tell you, I will be there, I will be there, because you know, I mean, it easy, you know? Do you know, I mean, it easy? And a lot of people calling for me to come out, come out. And maybe this is the time for me to come out now and to speak out more, because something has to be done about it. We can't allow this to happen. People bawling and catching the nen in this country, how hard things be. And they're going to come and get all these people, these lower concessions. And poor people in this country who build this country over the years, can't even get a little sweetie. Can't even get a little candy, and they're coming and getting all this, you know? And as the, the, the gentleman say, talk about the different companies, right? And can't get concession, not to get concession, cannot lower the prices and so on. Good point you made, very good point from Win FM. So the time has come for people to get up, get up and speak out. Stop coming to me, stop call Haddis. You have a voice, let it be heard. Good night, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. We appreciate your passion. And over the past couple of months, the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis have been demonstrating some passion because there are a number of things that impact our people. And as I listened to Dame Constance about, you know, previous developments in our federation under the People's Action Movement, and when I did my research, you know, you, you, you had the Development and Control and Planning Act, the Customs Act, the Immigration Act. But this new act is now giving powers to the zone developers that was, was once, you know, utilized by our government. They are taking the authority away from the necessary boards and institutions and handing it to the developers. So although the act doesn't say state within a state, if you could control your own security, your water, your infrastructure, well, I mean, come on, man. You're basically saying, I control this, I have my own government, I have my own country right here in Saint Kitts and Nevis. We should not stand for that. And all the previous developments that we have were successful without the S S Z. So let us stand up. I mean, it's not just my voice, because if, if everybody else is saying, man, let's go through the S S Z. But the thing is, you've heard so many cries. And I think the more that people understand what this legislation is about, is the more cries you are hearing. And we need to come together as one. This is time to save our federation. This is time to come together collectively to rescue our heritage. And we must secure it, we must secure our children's future, our grandchildren's future. I mean, I don't have any yet, and I don't want twenty years from now, my grandchild come and say, granny, if that's what that would be called, um, I can't go in the zone. I can't go in the zone. Imagine your grandchild being restricted. Imagine an employee coming and saying, the zone is not covered by social security. Imagine somebody saying that the minimum wage, because the zone have their own rules, we should not allow that. Anything less than that is trouble because this right now, what we have in our federation is causing too much headache. It's even confusing Prime Minister Drew, because he, as the, the person that the act empowers, is saying he doesn't know anything about destiny. So if he doesn't know anything about destiny, he wants me and you to know? He wants the ordinary man on the street to know, and the act says the Prime Minister is going to enter or may enter into a development agreement? I think he is taking us for a fool. And I know the, the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis, we are resilient and we are not foolish. And I think he is going to get a rude awakening.
Just to add to, uh, Haddis, you talk about the reason why they would have rushed this. Well, I could come up with my reason. First reason, they think that the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis are foolish people that we don't read. They expected to go into Parliament, pass this legislation, and expected us not to say anything on it. And the second reason, it has to be that deals have already been made. And because deals have been made, they had to pass this legislation to ensure that those deals can be enforceable. This Labour administration do not care about the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis, they only care about themselves.
Good night. I think I have a question for Kamau. Kamau, I'm putting this question to you as a, as, as a student of, of, of constitutional law. The Saint Kitts and Nevis construct is one where we have Nevis. The minority population has a certain protection from the majority population. And there are certain enumerated grounds where Nevis has specific administration within the island's, uh, uh, administration. But this is a federal bill, which in my estimation is one of the first delusion of federal power to not only the island of Nevis, but to an entity in Nevis, an enclave as construct. Um, any comments in terms of how that will operate? Seeing that is the first delusion of administrative power within the island of Nevis, given what was the balance that was formed in the Constitution prior? You have any comments?
So, um, as you said, the Constitution would have.
So as you said, the constitution would set up a framework, we call a federal framework where the federal parliament, the federal government has certain jurisdiction over matters and the Nevis Island Administration, Nevis Government would have a certain carve out of certain areas. I think it's about eight of them. Um, and land is one of them, but it, it's subject to some sort of caveat. I believe it's land held by the crown. I don't know, and I think that is why this destiny, that is what is going on, maybe buying a private land. So that is not necessarily land held by the crown at that point, but that they have a, a consortium of, of private land that they've acquired. And then they establish this development over it. Now, you could argue in the future, if it were the case that a development agreement was going to be made over crown land, then they, they will have a problem certainly. Because it's no way that the prime minister, in my opinion, based on the constitution, could sign off on giving away crown land in Nevis against the wishes of the NIA. The NIA has the exclusive jurisdiction to deal with crown land in Nevis. And so if that were to be the case in the future, then that would certainly be a problem. And that would raise some interesting constitutional arguments in the future. But you know, all these things are theoretical until someone decides to take the case and to put theory to practice. So we'll see what happens in the future.
I see something on the Facebook wall or the YouTube asking, how can this act be repealed? Well, simply put, the act can be repealed by the same parliament that passed it. And so that is the way in which the act would be repealed. The court can strike down legislation if that legislation is inconsistent with the constitution. It could strike it down as a whole if all of the, the, the parts of the, of the act is inconsistent. Or it could, whatever parts are inconsistent, remove them and make them non-avoided. But when it comes to repeal, it is the parliament that pass it or parliament is the one that repeals the law. So it means if Labour administration is not going to peel this, is not going to repeal this act, they may take a People's Action Movement administration to do so. And so that is why we're saying whenever the election is called, vote for the People's Action Movement for we will repeal this legislation for the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis.
Again, speaking, right? A referendum, a referendum can make a difference because we, the government, I keep, I said it before and I say it again, we, the government. We give them a job, it, and Saint Kitts, she, and Nevis. They are like power of attorneys. They does not have the ultimate power in their hands. They just can't take our patrimony and decide what I'm doing it. Something, something left me to wonder, right? How we can't see the true picture? What we heading for? We lose the, the great salpan. We would not have to be importing sea salt. We would not have to be importing drips. The water system on Saint Kitts, that's so the plorable. We can't carry, we can't extensive farming that it should be, it should take, to take us to another level. I'm a farmer. Twenty twenty four, we should have been exporting, I would involve exporting in nineteen ninety nine. Until I to be Douglas them because the figure they want to thief me money. And I decided on a basic match before them, alone mental matching. And it's like, uh huh, I pull away. We lose the, we lose the market. We import us from Canada, but paying a jet to come down here to pick up your papers. Your papers were just experimental crap all because of the administration. Maybe the government, you know, the administration that was in place back then. We could not have continued it because of Paul. Because of Paul, Douglas take me like big enemy.
Yes, so, um, when it comes to a referendum, the, the government is who has to put a referendum to the people. Right? But that's how it works, the government.
I believe this should be put to the, the government, which is the people.
Yeah.
It should be put to the, and not only us, the people, but the, both citizens of this island. No fat man against them coming here, come and live. May have no intention about no deportation. They been here and living, I went away and make money.
Yeah.
And different person territories, right? My intention is this, they should not be coming in a point in time of like this to make that kind of vital decision. East Basde, Central Basde, look at the foreigners who are on the voters list.
Okay, so we're winding down and I realize there's, I think, two more questions behind you. Yeah, so.
To say though that, Mr. Tweed, that is why it's important when we go to the polls to vote, we vote for the right set of people. Because you see how the wrong set of people can affect a nation, can hugely disadvantage a people. And so that is why we're saying that elections have consequences. The people voted for Labour and all Labour has done to this date is create hardship and difficulty on the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis.
Good night.
Good night.
Um, firstly, I want to thank you all for breaking down the legislation so that a commoner like me could understand, a layman could understand. And certain things I hear said tonight is, is something that, um, is eye opening for me, right? And to Mr. Tweed, the referendum date going soon come. So whatever referendum, when election come, we just do what we have to do, get rid of Labour from office. And to our political leader, I would like to say, keep on keeping on. Listening to your opening speech, all I heard is all about the people. All coming from it is the people. And I recognize that you are the last hope for the common man in Saint Kitts and Nevis. You represent that, the last hope for the common man. So continue the fight for the ordinary man, the common man like myself, the farmers and, and, and like Mr. Tweed and them, all of us on a whole. Keep on keeping on. I thank you for answering the call to represent and to be the defender of Saint Kitts, the people. Saint Kitts, Nevis, the federation. Thank you.
Okay, good evening again. This one is now from me as a member of the People's Action Movement and a candidate as well. And I'm interested in national security because I used to be in law enforcement. And this legislation to me, when I have to look at the fact that they're talking about leasing the seabed, I take our coastal protection very seriously. So I would like to know how this will impact. The coast guard, the police to do their own work. Because you know what? There's a big difference between having, let's say, an eight thousand square foot piece of land or even one acre or even a piece of land similar to Christoph, um, what do you, the overfit, like Marriott and those, Saint Christopher Club. There's a big difference between this and that because they might be gated, but they are smaller. But when you have a large amount of land like that, we're talking about a lot of coastline beaches will be taken away. And I just want to know because I'm interested in to taking care of the national security portfolio. And for sure, the police officers will have to have access to protect every citizen in our nation, every person in our land. So therefore this agreement, I am one hundred percent about repealing this act because it will be preventing law enforcement, even the functional judiciary to be effective. And I hope our people really are listening to what we are saying here tonight. If they thought it was something simple, it is not. So I just want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to come to express and let the people know it is something serious we're dealing with and I want them to know as well. The People's Action Movement, from a national security point of view, will, if it's that alone, we will repeal this act for because we want to make sure our laws, our constitution are throughout every square inch of this great land of ours. Thank you, God bless you, and of course, God bless constituency number seven.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yes. Yes, Mr. Pell, that question you raised about leasing of the seabed, I think I mentioned something to that effect. That is one of the areas under this SSC legislation that does not have to come to parliament. And that is a major issue. Because it's not just leasing of the seabed, remember, to protect our rights that was given to us by Pam, that we enjoy all of the beaches in this country. And that particular area of the leasing of the seabed does not have to come to parliament. So when they tell you, oh, in future, all the development agreements, you'll be able to see them because they come to the parliament, that is not true. Because that particular one, and if the developer gets all the concessions and he sells the concessions to somebody else, that new agreement does not come to the parliament. So you will never know what went on behind the scenes. So there, there are a lot of problems with this legislation. I mean, from the time you see a, a, a piece of legislation which should be so far reaching because it is building what people are terming a state within a state. Now, how could you have a state within a state? I mean, a state, an area with so many different powers, et cetera. And you could get it done in ten little sections of the law? You must know, no kind of development bill could be this size. It's like a scrap of paper with all the information, all of the regulations that will go with what these people are to do and what are our rights, et cetera. You can't put that in a few pages. Is this what they think about us? This is just ridiculous.
I see on the YouTube page again, the next one. Oh, okay, I just, Carrie saying, Mr. Gomes, thanks for answering my question. Mr. Grant said that the constitution protects against inequality, but the implications of this act introduces inequality is the, is there not legal grounds? And I would say to her that the SSC on the face of it does create two systems of treatment and anything, any act that infringes our rights under the constitution can be challenged and struck down by the court. And so if anything is done that affect our citizens, we are here, the People's Action Movement is here. We have a team of lawyers and we can challenge the government and this legislation.
Could I just add that the test, the real test will come when or if the government attempts to bring any of these development, whatever it is they call them, to create any zone. And if they come to parliament with anything in the future about any of these zones, that would be the time for, for test. That would be the time when the public will know what they have to do.
Good evening. Uh, based on the act of how I interpret it, for Nevis could make their own decision well than being to Saint Kitts and Nevis. I'm saying, let's say, Nevis, the majority of Nevis agree with destiny, goes along with destiny. We, even though in federation, we have more the population over here, what can we do if that's the case? To slur them up, uh, you know, hamper their development? I don't know if, that's my interpretation. I don't know if I'm interpreting it wrong, where Nevis can go by themselves and say, Saint Kitts, I'm sorry, it is working for us.
Yeah, so that's how, that's how the conversation appears to be framed, right?
Yes.
Because as I said earlier, the prime minister always said that he hasn't seen anything about his destiny as floating around. But that's problematic because before a development agreement can get signed off, is the prime minister's signature have to go on it, right? It's not the NIA alone can sign off on one of these. The prime minister has to be a party to any development agreement that goes on, whether it's in Saint Kitts or it's in Nevis. Okay, he has to be a party to it. So it's not a matter where Nevis could do their own thing, Saint Kitts could do their own thing. He must be a part, which means Saint Kitts ultimately would be a party to that agreement as well in Nevis.
Okay. Well, last, lastly, I would say from since then till now, we're here, we are not for it. And I would say that's not a good sign for the investors. So I, I thinking they actually will be curtailing, they will pull it back. That's what I feel based on research in other countries. That's the failed SSC zone actually because of majority of the people did not get what they promised or they cheat the government out of something. And so, so at this moment, I will say, maybe probably good, you know, we, we raise our voices and I show development, they're, they're hearing it. And if anyone listen to the destiny propaganda thing, you know, we say in scholarships, how much money going pay overtime and all these incentives that we giving back to the public. And I think that the reason why they come with this because, as I said, that we, the locals, you know, will actually, you know, put our voices and the project will come to our heart. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Just before Mr. Coco comes to the mic, I just want about Mr. Williams to know that the People's Action Movement is not against development. Because I don't want there to be something going around that the Pam is against development. Anything that uplifts our people, it must be done properly and in order. Development must not be to the detriment of our people. This piece of act says it empowers the prime minister. What about you? What about her? What about the man in George Street? What about the man in Childstone? This act must uplift our people as well. And so any development that happens in Saint Kitts and Nevis, let us look what is currently at stake. Let us look at, I mean, if you just look down the road, they want to have a Fort Thomas Hotel. And they said it's a museum of love. But what happened to the museum down, um, on the Bay Road, we don't love it anymore. Let the developers fix that too. Fix it first, okay? They said they love Bracha, our first national hero. Look at the state of that building. What I said it was going to do as a museum. We're now in twenty twenty five, it was most of it done in twenty twenty three. So now they, they ain't love the two museums them that they wanted to build for our people. And now our heritage society, they, they just, they just have this fancy picture, Taj Mahal. And now our heritage society, they just have this fancy picture, Taj Mahal, and even come to ask the neighbors, the surrounding communities, what they think. PAM is not against development, but it must be done in order and it must be done in a manner that make sure that what we currently have is looked after and looked after properly. And so, sorry, Mr. Koka, I'm going to finish right now. I just want that to be clear because anything that happens and is going to affect our people, and once we see that happening, we are going to talk. And when necessary, we are going to walk. And when we have to run, we are going to tie up and strap up those boats. Because the people must matter more. It must matter, any development must be with the people in mind. So try, I'm going to keep on, keep keeping on for the people.
Good evening. I am more on the food security side. If a developer or the developer lease a part of the seabed, which is a good fishing ground for fishers, can they go in there and fish or they would have to move all their traps and stuff like that?
Okay, so your question is, if a part of the seabed is leased to a developer, would local fishermen be able to go in and fish still?
If it is a good fishing ground for fishers, yes. Can they go in and fish?
The locals, you mean?
Yes.
Well, however, to understand it, if you have a lease, right, let's say you lease an apartment, that apartment is yours to use for however long you leased it. A man can just walk in your apartment and open your fridge and take your banana, right? That is yours, you have exclusive possession over that space for as long as the lease lasts, right? So, and this is, this is a part of the problem with this legislation is that it's so ambiguous. You don't, it's a lot of questions you're asking. And so you ask me a question, I have to ask you back a question because none of us know, right? I can only interpret what is on the paper to the best that I can. And from what I see on the paper, in my understanding of what a lease is, if you give me a lease of a particular area, that is mine to use and anybody using that does so at my pleasure. So if you come and you fish on my, in my water, I have the right to tell you leave. I can allow you to stay if I'm nice, if I choose to. But if I'm not, I will tell you vacate.
So then, am I understanding you that fishers would have to find somewhere else?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I think we've come to what has been a very thought provoking evening. A lot has been asked and a lot has been asked back. And to the best that we could, we sought to provide some clarification on some of the most pressing issues under this legislation. And I want to say, before I hand over to the political leader, legislation, when you're passing an act of parliament, one of the rules of legislating, of creating an act, is that the act must be clear, must leave no room for doubt. If you said the law is this, the man on the road is supposed to know, I'm not supposed to do this or I am supposed to do this. And if you have a document that is creating more questions than answers, then that's a problem. That cannot be a law. A law can't be something that nobody knows what exactly is happening or what exactly are we supposed to do? You know, are we supposed to go right, we supposed to go left? What exactly is our standing versus the standing of the developers? And that is the most troubling part. Nobody actually knows what is going on. And whenever you ask a question, it's almost as if you are insulting the drafters of the legislation and they get angry at you and they start to make all kind of ad hominem remarks, which I won't go into. But the problem is serious that we have a law here that is raising a lot of questions and nobody is satisfactorily answering them. And when we get answers, we get answers that we can see by simply reading the act is not entirely true. And with that being said, I want to just hand over to the political leader who will wrap up the evening first.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for sticking and staying with us because as we recognize that this is something that touches the core of our people. And the more and more we hear from the people, it's the more and more we have to call for the repeal of this SSD act. This is not something about sustainability. Sustainability will tell the fisherman how more fish they can catch. It will tell the farmer how much more crops they can produce. But this act seems to stifle the development of those who are already here. And we ought not to let that happen. You know, persons cry when they hear the term state within a state. But if certain powers are transferred to the zone developers, that is really a cause for a problem. Customs, immigration, policing. If we are handing over executive powers to zone developers, we are causing havoc in this country. And anyone who wants to support havoc ought not to be in control of our country. And so I want to encourage you, every time you see your parliamentary representative, tell them, say no to SSD. Tell them, tell the Prime Minister, time to repeal SSD. Tell them that SSD is not for we. And once you continue to let your voices be heard, anybody in their right-thinking mind who ignores you, you need to send them a strong message. And so the time is going to come because they say everything had to go parliament. According to Dr. Drew, he ain't nothing about destiny, he ain't see it. But if he ain't see it and the act empowers it, that is not our destiny. And so I'm asking us to continue to be vigilant. When you want us to come back to hear, to hear more answers to the questions, because some people dilly-dallying, when you ask them questions, we will gather the legal team for you. And as I indicated before, it's not just the four of us here. One thing I've learned over the years is that PAM has some great lawyers. Once upon a time, I used to follow one lawyer through the square with a little pulley bag. I don't know where I reach now, but I always looked because I was on the team when we had to deal with boundaries. And I see Mr. Flanders' trust behind there making sure those papers are delivered. We have good support staff. And so if we have to protect our people from this piece of legislation that points out so many flaws, we have lawyers to back you up. And let us come together and do the necessary things to ensure that we save Senkitz and Nevis. I remember when I used to go to Ms. Mitchum's office, what was that, the Increase in Senators' Bill? I see my name in some small fine print. I got to go read it now to see because we were able to get the senators change. I am thankful for the guidance of Dame Constance. I went up Chesley Steps and I'm not going to tell you what happened when I went up the steps. But Chesley has been a source of encouragement. Even before I became a lawyer, he has guided me in different areas in the law. Even when I had to help to photocopy the papers for Prime Minister now Kamala Besar Besessah and Prime Minister now Mia Matley. But Shani look like she walking in the footsteps of prime ministers. Because I'm moving from photocopying papers to changing laws and changing countries for the better. So I ask you to stick and stay with us. Sometimes we may not get all the things we want when we want it. But when PAM gets fired up, it's fire, fire for days because we are going to fire those people who are presently in the parliament, in National Assembly, who are, who are causing problems for our great nation and we must not, we must not have it. And so I thank you for your time tonight. But everything we do is for you. I know Dame Constance is here as a lawyer, but she's also a great advisor. And I know she was a great politician. I didn't get to deal with her as a magistrate, she might have run me out of court. But she has fought for the women, fought for the women of our country, fought for the pregnant women, those who worked in the civil service. And you see now we are reaping the benefits, creating new ministries. So you know that great things can happen when we put our legal minds together. And so just hold the faith, hold the faith. The people will speak louder than those who are causing problems. And I ask you to just ask God for guidance and wisdom because we will not leave you deserted when you are being trampled on. Thank you.
To deliver the vote of thanks, I would just like to call Mr. Grill, Nubian Grill, to the microphone, wherever it is, and bring these proceedings to an end.
It's on? Okay. Wow. As leaders of the People's Action Movement, we are duty bound not only to attack other political parties. Our primary duty is to protect, uplift, care for, and also listen to and speak for and on behalf of the people. And today, this press conference is the People's Action Movement speaking on behalf of the people and further pushing our People's First Agenda. And so I would want to thank the panelists, Mr. Gomes, Dame Constance Mitchum, our political leader, Ms. Shani Natasha Gue Brooks, and the chair of this town hall, Mr. Grant, for bringing these very important issues to the people. I want to thank the media house and the media houses because the media play a very critical role in bringing these issues for the people and to the people. And I want to thank them for attending. And finally, last but not least, I want to thank those today who are in attendance because you could have been anywhere doing anything of equal importance, but you chose to be here to support the People's Action Movement and the People's Action Movement People's First Agenda. And for that, I want to say thank you to everyone here, the panelists and those viewing us here and abroad. May God bless you and may God bless the People's Action Movement. Drive home safe. Good night.